Chief Sheerbaum, Chief Smith, we have amended our agenda to open it up to allow you to make a presentation, so the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Shippman. Good afternoon, members of council. Thank you for this opportunity to brief you all. I want to welcome Chief Smith with your way as well.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chief Smith, Broad Smith, Atlanta Fire Rescue, Fire Chief.
President Shippman, members of the council, I would like to brief you on events that transpired yesterday at the site of the Future Public Safety Training Center, making sure that we brought accurate facts to this body and that you are aware of fully what transpired. We do have a presentation that we're going to show if we go to the first slide, and that we also, Mr. President, have a video that can do much more justice than I can that will portray the events that occurred yesterday. As you are aware, there is a week of action occurring in the city this week where there is individuals gathered to raise concern and engage in a variety of activities in opposition to the Public Safety Training Center. That has occurred in the past. This police department has protected peaceful protest over and over again when other individuals do gather in any type of opposition where they are expressing their First Amendment rights. There was a two-day event occurring that happened on Saturday and Sunday when a music event was being held in DeKalb County, some in land adjacent to where the Public Safety Training Center is being built. If you'll go to the next slide, please. During this two-day event, individuals were gathered for a musical. Different groups were performing. On the latter part of the second day, a group of individuals that up until that moment had been there peacefully, we began to notice started to change into black clothing and organized and gathering items that would indicate to us that a peaceful protest was not planned, but there may potentially be other actions that were underfoot. If you'll go to the next slide, please. What we saw is this group moved rather quickly to the site for the proposed Public Safety Training Center. They were equipped with a variety of items: commercial fireworks, Molotov cocktails. You also see that they will have shields in the video we'll play shortly. They moved quickly on the group of officers that were assembled there. These officers had been stationary at the site protecting the location. Go to the next slide, please. The, I'm going to let the video play here while I walk through each of the situations. What you see here is a group of individuals, approximately 100 in number, that are approaching the officers that are stationary on top of the hill. The officers are in a fenced-in area. The officers are on city property and are positioning themselves in no patrol activity. They're just there at that location. You'll see individuals starting to form. If you'll notice, in the first line, there are individuals with shields that are forming. And what you can't see is devices that will soon be used to attack the officers, who are actually behind a fenced-in area. What has just transpired is that individuals were seen changing out of the clothes that they were wearing at the concert and were now dressing themselves in all black with backpacks, with items, fencing of nature approaching. As you'll notice, as the officers see these individuals approaching, they are clearly aligned to take aggressive action against these officers. The officers attempted first to de-escalate by repositioning themselves, thank you, repositioning themselves inside of the fenced-in area. The officers again start to reposition because they can tell this is not a peaceful demonstration. This is actually going to be an attack on them as the fenced-in area is breached. You can start to see smoke occurring. As fires are set, Molotov cocktails are thrown and fireworks are discharged. You will see the individuals, and this is from our air unit that is deployed in the area, you will see individuals that have started to move against the officers. They will have start throwing rocks, fireworks, as they are pushing the officers in the area. We are fortunate that our officers had the ability to relocate in a manner to limit the engagements with the individuals. If you'll notice in the top-left-hand portion of the screen, you'll see a number of persons coming through the fence after they had lobbed objects at the officers. These individuals, particularly those with the shields, are going to move to the front gate, where they're going to position themselves when it appears to be an attempt to keep pursuing the officers. And you will shortly start seeing rocks being thrown at the officers. You saw one just being thrown by the individual, and then shortly you will see fireworks being lodged at the officers. The officers are moving to protect additional city assets that are behind this area. And you'll see a firework that was just lobbed at the lieutenant that is discharging. You're going to see this continue from a variety of angles, particularly in areas that aren't necessarily in view of this camera. These attacks are going to continue as officers are repositioning. The fireworks keep being thrown. We're going to switch back. You'll see one that has just landed to the left side of the of the screen. And you will also see smoke from other fires that are starting to be set around the area. We're going to switch now to a different camera view, where we see individuals as another group is engaging the officers with rocks, Molotov cocktails and bottles, are moving to set fire to the various equipments in the area. What you see in the left hand of the gentleman with the mask over his face is a Molotov cocktail. It is being, there will be accelerants in his hands that will be used also to attack some of the construction equipment that is in the area. These individuals are masked to hide their identity. This is playing out across the area that had previously been fenced in. There will be generators that will be destroyed, other pieces of equipment that's being destroyed. There you see more accelerant being thrown onto the vehicle that is being set on fire. At this time, our officers are showing great restraint despite the attack and despite an effort to inflict vitally hard upon them. They remained in a position to be able to be prepared as additional units arrived to move in and will soon be again making arrests, but to ensure that they are being restrained in the ability to protect themselves, the remainder of the city assets that are still under their care, and to be able to move quickly to start enforcing the law with our partners. And what you see here, ladies and gentlemen, is as some of the individuals that had just previously attacked the work site returned back into the woods, they start changing back into the clothes that they were just wearing moments before as they were portraying themselves to be attendees of the event that was occurring in the music. So it was clear today that we saw a repeat of what we've seen in the past, where events that are shown to be peaceful and to be being publicized as be peaceful are being used by individuals as cover to launch illegal and criminal attacks, in this case attacking officers of this police department. And I want to commend every man and woman on duty yesterday, as they stood in the gap to do their job, which is protect the property of this city, which was to ensure that we have a Public Safety Training Center built, to ensure that everyone that calls 911 in Atlanta, Georgia gets a proper professional response. The restraint they showed when they stood there in the attack and repositioned themselves, to be prepared to go back in and make an arrest, make lawful arrest within the manner of their training and their discipline, to ensure that the individuals that just had moments before launched attacks on them and attempted to destroy the property arrests were made. I'm going to let the fire chief speak regarding the threats and dangers that were around the fires, and then we're going to come back and give your briefing, Mr. President, on those that were arrested yesterday.
Good afternoon again. What you will see on the photo to the left is you will see one of several spot fires that were set on last evening. In addition to, you see the large plume of smoke. In this space, what you deem is potential for a wildland fire to be established in this area, which is a threat not only to the first responders that were working out on that scene, however, but to the protesters as well as the citizens in that community. In addition to that, what you do not see is that the old landfill that is adjacent to this space is emitting methane gas, and so that provides another hazard, yet that we have to deal with as we relate to protecting the public. If you look at the picture on the right, you will see at the base our critical infrastructure. You will see at the base of one of the large high-voltage power lines that feeds the corridor coming into downtown Atlanta, and it feeds not only Grady Hospital, but assisted living facilities as well as citizens who live in town for the city of Atlanta. So as you can see, the simple threat of just spot fires has the potential to cause a lot of harm, a lot of danger to the citizens that we ensure that we will protect on a day-to-day basis. And I'll turn it back over to the police chief.
Thank you, Chief. Council President, members of the council, shortly after you saw this, the attack on the men and women of the Atlanta Police Department, we had a rapid response from our partners at the DeKalb County Police Department, the Sheriff of Fulton County, as well as the Georgia State Patrol. Those officers entered into the woods as individuals were attempting to flee, hide the weapons they had just used, as well as to change their clothing, and we began to make a number of arrests. The individuals that were arrested, again, were showing the pattern of what we've seen in previous arrests in the city. And I again want to make the distinction, if I may, Mr. President, is that there are two things that simultaneously occur in many of those events. Those individuals that are exercising their rights under the First Amendment for peaceful protest, whatever their position may be. This police department continues to protect them. But on the other side of that, individuals that are using criminal acts to attack, to be able to undermine the business of good government and be able to harm both property and lives. Just last nine officers of this department, as well as DeKalb County, the Georgia State Patrol, and the Sheriff's Department moved in and made 23 arrests. What we learned as we moved through those arrests, the vast majority of those individuals were not, again, from our city or even from our region. With other 23 people being arrested yesterday, only two resided in the state of Georgia, and only one had an address from here within our city limits of Atlanta. The individuals were arrested, and I want to thank the men and women again of the Atlanta Police Department, the Georgia State Patrol, the Sheriff's Department, as well as the DeKalb County Police Department for the professionalism that they demonstrated throughout the night and into the early hours of this morning. While many of us were asleep, they continued to work through the night to make the arrest and take these individuals into custody that had earlier in the evening attempted to bring harm to our officers. As we continue to move through the week, we know there's a number of events that are planned in our city and in the region. This police department will be protecting those events. Everything that is peaceful, that is orderly, that is taking a position that may be in opposition to ours, we're going to protect those, because every citizen of this country and in this city has that right. What you do not have the right to do is attack members of law enforcement. What you do not have the right to do is attack other citizens, who may be there to legitimately demonstrate their views on these issues, but then are used as cover to launch these type of attacks. You place them in harm. You place them at the risk of arrest when they were there to legitimately protest. Individuals that may use this week to bring further attacks on public safety, on property of this government and private property in Atlanta, Georgia, will be arrested, and they will be placed before courts, so those courts can hear our cases and make the appropriate judgment. And so we would encourage everyone to please be mindful that there are individuals in our city that are using peaceful protest for cover, and that will use peaceful protest to do what we just demonstrated by video on the screen. And we are in a position, Mr. President, to take actions that we deem appropriate, to protect the First Amendment, and to hold individuals accountable that would desire to do harm in our city.
Thank you, Chief Smith, Chief Sheerbaum. Since we are in committee, the whole questions, if you are open to them, are allowed, if that is okay by both of you. Councilmember Norwood.
Yes, my question is this. We had an entire chamber filled with people who had a different narrative. There were cameras. There were lots of television cameras that had been here all afternoon. So my question to the administration, not necessarily to you two gentlemen, is why do we do this when no one is left? When all of those people who have been down here claiming to represent the majority of the city of Atlanta, whether they are or not, but they didn't see this. This was really good information. I would have loved for every one of those very hysterical people that we've been sitting listening to for two or three hours to have seen an actual video of what really did happen. And there may be great reasons that the administration chose to do it this way, but our media is gone, and all the people that needed to see this are gone. So that's not a question, that's just a observation.
Councilmember Hillis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, chiefs, for this information and presentation. First, I know there have been previous injuries, but were there any firefighter or police city employee injuries at yesterday's event?
Councilmember Hillis, there was not. We're very fortunate that that was the outcome. You saw what was being lobb'd at our officers and what was being fired at them, as well as the firefighters that later responded. And so we're fortunate that there was no injuries.
Thank you for that. Next question is, you know, as you stated, you know, there's a stark difference between the right to peaceful protest, yet we have people that are taking advantage of those peaceful protests and causing injuries to people, throwing Molotov cocktails at officers, and damaging millions of dollars of equipment. Some that's not even related to the Public Safety Center build that just happens to be in the area. So as you mentioned, and as council members know, you know, we have pulled resources from police zones. We have a number of partners, thankfully, state and other local law enforcement and federal law enforcement. So what is, if this continues, do we have the ability to deploy even greater force to quill this, you know, the millions of damage, millions of dollars of damage to public and private properties?
We will make adjustments as those that use various tactics. Yesterday was an escalation. We had not seen this large number of individuals engaged in this activity. And the aggressive manner in which the officers were attacked was a significant change from what we had seen before, when it generally had been setting property on fire. We'd seen police cars set on fire, windows busted. But this was started as an attack against individuals, men and women who are employees of this city. So that was an escalation, Councilmember Hillis, that we have already made adjustments for, both within our capability as well as with our partners. And I would like to point out that yesterday, after this occurred, we saw a very prompt response from the Georgia Bureau of Investigation, as well as response from the Federal Bureau of Investigation, who are on scene within very short period of time. The charges that have been brought today in DeKalb County have been brought by the Georgia Bureau of Investigation of charging these individuals with domestic terrorism, which was the warrants that were secured today. So we do have the ability to continue to leverage our resources of our partners, and we will make adjustments to ensure that whatever is presented to us that we're in a position to address.
Thank you for that. And as you mentioned, very thankful to the men and women of APD and AFRD for all their work and for all of our partners in this. And just pray for a continued peaceful protest, as everyone has the right to do, and the safety of our officers and firefighters. So thank you.
Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Thank you. First, Chief Sheerbaum and Chief Smith, you all have, as always, I love working with you all. I don't know how you do all that you do. I'm glad that nobody was hurt, and none of our, none of our employees were hurt yesterday during the escalation, as you put it. Some things I am concerned about. Well, one, I would love for you to elaborate on the role of the FBI within this investigation.
Yes, ma'am. We have been seeing over the last number of months crimes that have been occurring in other cities focused toward the Public Safety Training Center. So we have seen arsons in cities outside of Atlanta. We've seen the destruction of property outside of Atlanta, and we've seen the harassment of private sector employees outside of Atlanta. So that is the nexus where the Federal Bureau of Investigation has been assisting in this investigation.
Thank you. I'm curious about the, you said that also, I believe a civil rights layer was arrested yesterday?
I'm not sure of the occupation of the arrestees.
I believe that they are constituent of mine, and I believe they are. I have follow-up questions about that. One of the things that does concern me, I want to first say that I do not agree with the destruction of property. As you have heard my colleague say, that is not something I agree with. Something that does concern me, however, is the overuse of the word terrorism. It is very dangerous. And as somebody who grew up being called a terrorist for being Muslim, for living in a very racist community, to me, whereas I do think property damage, vandalism, all of these things are absolutely correct, the use of the word terrorism, as it has been freely used consistently and continually, to me is an overarching by the state. It is problematic terminology for our city to be using. It is also a very slippery slope when it comes to the First Amendment right. And what it feels like to me is the trumped, like trumped-up charges for the sake of being able to then say, the state to say, you've overreached, and then for probation to be administered. I think that is very dangerous when it comes to our First Amendment right. That is, I would really encourage us to think twice before using the word terrorist in some of these charges. There's a reason that it has not stuck in this country for really ever. So I would really like us to be thoughtful. That being said, I'm also curious as to why we have APD officers on site for a location that we have no jurisdiction over. We have no legal jurisdiction on this property. I really want to commend my colleague, Councilmember Lewis, for bringing this to, for talking about this during PSLA. But why do we have officers on location or firefighters on location if we have no legal jurisdiction on this property? It seems to me that that is a problem. And also spending money that we really, I don't know why we're spending that money when AP, this is APF, this is an APF project.
Yes, ma'am. I will tell you this. We have deputized officers that are at that location, and we have structured our position there with our jurisdictions, and it is aligned with the law. I will always let the judges and the prosecutors determine what the charges would be if they prosecuted, but I do not want any man and woman that works for the Atlanta Police Department to think for a second their chief tolerates the violence that has been labored against them, both on Peachtree Street and on Key Road. And so for the men and women of this police department that hear my voice, know that we will do everything we're going to do, can do to protect you. We're going to give you the tools and the resources to ensure that they uphold the law properly, and in the manner that the Constitution requires them to. So we will always be in consultation with the district attorneys of the two counties and the prosecutorial bodies to ensure the appropriate charges are brought, and never think for a moment that if a charge is brought against this person who is acting in a violent manner, that it ever reflects on someone that is acting in a peaceful manner, that are exhibiting their rights under the Constitution.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Chief, for coming in today. I know you're pretty busy, man. Both of you are off coming in today. I was thinking about what happened last night and thinking about what we're doing, moving forward. First, I want to ask you, how many people out of there arrested, how many people from, you said from how many states?
Yes, sir. There were 23 individuals arrested, and I believe they were from 14 different states.
Okay, how many were from Atlanta?
One from Atlanta.
And one from Georgia, right?
One from, I believe it was Athens, yes, sir.
Okay, so when I think about it, because what happened, remind me, it looked like January 6th. I ain't never seen police run from a group of people. And so the only thing I could think about when I saw that video, I saw it on ATL Scoop. The video's all out there. I've been seeing it all over. And when I saw the police officers run, I mean, I was a little nervous. When I saw the heat map, and I saw 100 people, I saw, I saw it. I mean, like, that ain't the Atlanta way. And so when you say that, when you say that many people were actually a part of it, we scared, I mean, I ain't never seen, I'm just thinking about the, at the same time at Six Flags, we had some young men that were fighting. Some of our teenagers fighting at Six Flags. They didn't run up on the police. They didn't run up on the police with Molotov cocktails, throwing to burn up stuff, which is totally different from what we're doing. We talk about like protesting to get something, which I've done. Rashad Brooks is a friend of mine. Oscar Kane is a friend of mine. Oscar Kane was actually the activist, the reason why we wear cameras, why our police wear cameras on their chest. Oscar Kane was the activist that came down here and got that going. And so he was actually killed by a police officer who cut his camera off. He never would have ran at his police officers. So what I will say, I thank you so much for last night for working. I want to really commend the officers, because y'all were under some immense pressure, and to not see a gun fired back, because when I see the firecrackers, I'm from Cleveland Avenue. If they throw firecrackers at me, I don't know those firecrackers. So when I see those popping off, I'm just thinking as an individual, as a person, and I'm seeing some of the, I've never seen that, so I appreciate APD for doing that. I'll switch over now to how I think we can keep APD officers safe, because I agree with Councilmember Bakhtiari that we don't have jurisdiction over there. And so I'll ask you the same question I asked the other day. Is there any place ever that the City of Atlanta Police Department has ever done this for any other organization?
Councilmember Lewis, and I think we also had these discussions at PSLA. This is the first time in my time being on the Atlanta Police Department or resident of the city that we've ever built a Public Safety Training Center. We know that the both that we have for the fire and the police department are outdated. They both have been condemned, and we know for what we ask of our men and women, they do not have sufficient facilities. So the investment in their ability to serve the citizens of this city is significant. The investment that ensure that anyone who dials 911 in Atlanta, Georgia from the year 2024 and beyond has a properly trained and equipped police and fire department. So this is the first time, because it's the first time we've had this type of investment, and the men and women who say yes to public service. And as we craft our ability to protect against that, our ability to protect against that, it will be done in a manner that is legal and proper, but under the law, and is using the resources that are just the proper amount to be able to do what we have to do in that space. We're not going to put any extra officers in there that we don't have to. And I hope that film, that video, rather, demonstrates why we even have to have resources there. We're only there because there's that. If there's no that, there will not be, there will not be police officers of any jurisdictions at that location.
And so the, I'm looking at the, at the Atlanta City Council Presentation Agency Collaborations, and the one glaring mission was DeKalb Police Department.
And DeKalb should have been on that, sir. We apologize. They were out there with us last night. It was actually their command post that we were operating out of yesterday evening. There was a significant number of resources that were deployed by the DeKalb Police Department. And so I hope for a moment that our missing that logo on that page does not reflect the commitment of that department that was there yesterday evening, and until the early hours of this morning.
I'm extremely hopeful that Atlanta Police Department officers are able to get extra jobs while doing this. I, as long as this is going on, as long as we are actually removing police officers from our different departments, I, once again, I don't want one move from District 12, part of Zone 3, because we know a crime law. I had a friend that was shot this weekend. I don't want one move from District 12, part of Zone 3, because we having a police shortage. I know we are the ones that are facing the grudge of it. But I would like to know if there's an opportunity to where we can actually move our folks out until we get the state to come in more, get other folks to take in, because Atlanta Police Department, we talk about our shortages. We've been talking about it since I got elected. I don't think that we can put our people over there.
So we are crafting a deployment plan that is smart, that takes into consideration of our ability to fight crime, protect large events. We have the, we have the parade coming up this weekend for St. Patrick's Day. We will continue to do that and craft a smart deployment plan out there that allows the project to proceed, protects those that are working on it, and doesn't diminish public safety in the city. That will evolve over the next few weeks and months. But you do know you have my commitment to ensure that we have the smartest deployment plan in place.
And I think the reason why I feel so strongly about it is because I've, we've had to find security, and we've had to pay police extra jobs to do midnight basketball. We've had to pay folks to actually have, we have to get police for anything we're doing at parks, and we have to pay for extra jobs. I love it. I love to see our police officers make some extra money. And so with what's going on, if our police officers want to go out there, they'd accept that extra job. Right now, I think we're mandating them to go out there, and I just don't want to see my district, just District 12, I can't speak for everybody else. I would prefer if the district to give Major Ricker some power. Me speaking, now, he didn't ask me to do this. This is me giving him some power, giving him some resources. I would prefer if his officers can stay in his zone as we move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, President Shippman. Thank you so much, Chief Sheerbaum. Thank you so much, Chief Smith. Thank you for coming down to City Hall today. My question is a small question, but I also think it's a kind of a big question. And it's, I've seen a lot of the reporting about what, just in the immediate aftermath of the fireworks and the fires, there was a, to your point, a large operation to try to make sure everyone is safe. And I've seen reports that members of the press or legal observers were caught up in that mix, including particularly folks who are still incarcerated right now. Can you unpack that or speak to those charges or those claims? Because to me, I mean, we talked about the First Amendment, people's rights with regards to that, but that is also a reflection of that First Amendment right. And I want to make sure that we're doing everything in our power as a city, or everything that's possible to us in this coordination or this collaborative effort with other law enforcement entities, to ensure that folks that can be out there, even though they're physically in those spaces, are not being held in a way that they shouldn't be.
Certainly. And I believe, and I will get you a correct number, Councilmember Dozier, that approximately 10 individuals were detained, who was determined had not engaged in a criminal activity other than being on the property, which in itself is illegal. And so they were issued criminal trespass warnings and allowed to leave. So there are those that we know we've encountered for the first time, that were not engaged in a criminal act, that were actually on the property, that were given criminal trespass warnings and were escorted off the property. Those, because of the charges being brought by the Georgia Bureau of Investigation with support of the various agencies, I can't speak in detail to each of those, but the charges were placed in a charging document that a judge, an independent judge, has agreed with. And so if there's anything specifically that we can look into for you, we will. But if there is someone on the property that we do, that they're there for the first time, we don't believe they're engaged in what you saw on the video screen. They're giving criminal trespass warnings, and that occurred yesterday. And I believe it was approximately 10 times that it occurred yesterday. And we do have an extensive list of individuals who we've afforded that right to leave the property if they choose to do so, and if they're given warnings, we maintain that. And those individuals, if they do not return, will not be arrested.
Any other questions from council members?
President Shippman, I just wanted to address on behalf of the mayor's office, Brian Thomas, Director of Communications of the Mayor's Office of Communications. I wanted to address Councilmember Norwood's comments regarding I wanted to address Councilmember Norwood's comments regarding the media and our presentation today. First, I wanted to say that we are respecting the council's process here. We wanted to make sure, as council does by tradition and practice, that you do proclamations and public comment. We certainly didn't want to insert ourselves on that process. Do want to encourage you, that the media is here, Channel 26 is broadcasting, and we have shared this feed with both local and national media. Since this project began, we have been battling misinformation. We'd like to enlist the council's support in tackling some of that information. One place to start is our website, www.atltrainingcenter.com. There are facts on that page, there are videos on that page, and we'd encourage you to share that with your constituents, just as we are doing through the city. It's really important that we get the right information out there. There is misinformation out there, there was misinformation presented by, through public comment today, and we recognize that. We're going to support the public's right to share that information even when we disagree with it. To the questions of jurisdiction, I do want to just clarify, this is the same site, this is the same larger property that housed the Atlanta Police Academy about nearly 50 years ago. There's been ongoing police training, explosive ordinance disposal, SWAT team training at this site for 50 years. The police's presence on this site is not new, nor is it unusual. So we want to make sure that that is clear.
Mr. Thomas, would you be open to questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Well, of course, I have to be nice to you, you're a constituent. But, no, thank you very much. But I do have a question. Our own legal team spoke about us not having jurisdiction there. So I am, these are the things that I get confused about because it's two different sources of information. So one, there is that piece, and I am also wondering, moving forward, are we going to be doing anything about working with agencies that do not utilize body cameras? Because that is, it is 2023, and while we don't have jurisdiction over the state, I cannot, like, I cannot imagine that we would not want to make sure that we are working with agencies who, if they are wielding guns and weapons, should be utilizing body cameras in 2023. So especially when we take a look at everything that's happened, especially since 2020. So I'm curious as if we are going to make a request at the state, if we are going to offer to get federal money? I've researched quite a few federal grants that we could easily utilize to make sure that that's being done. Is there anything that we have planned to push for accountability, fully knowing that we do not have jurisdiction over the state, but are we going to be doing anything to push for that?
Thank you, councilmember. So on the first part, I'll caveat, I am not a lawyer, and we share a law department, so we should have those conversations with our law department. I will say that the Atlanta Police Department is working in coalition with a number of law enforcement agencies, as the chief presented here today, including GBI, including the DeKalb PD, so that there is a clear interdepartmental agreement there with how that operation works. As pertains to body cameras, I would just say that, you know, I think the mayor, this is something the mayor has asked about as well, and this may be a question for council as well. And I believe there's maybe some legislation that's being considered, to consider, you know, in joint law enforcement operations, what would be the role of body worn cameras? Obviously, Atlanta Police Department do wear body worn cameras. It's proven enormously beneficial in restoring trust with the community, so it's a policy that the city certainly fully supports for its own officers. As it pertains to other jurisdictions, as you said, we can't control that, but there may be legislative options that this council can consider to encourage that in joint operations.
Councilmember Lewis.
And for clarification purposes, for people at home, a lot of folks, they always say that we're building this in a majority black community. Can I ask, where's the current public safety facility?
I'm gonna turn to Chief for that.
It may sound like I'm asking you a question I know the answer to.
We currently do not have a public safety training facility.
But the closest thing that you have is where?
So we had to get out of a school. It was condemned. We were using an old elementary school right there in your jurisdiction.
Right there in District 12. So, and it's in the most blackest part of my district. It's in Pool Creek. And if you really want to think about anybody who knows, sitting at home, they'll know that the current, where the police all going to in the daytime to train has been in District 12 the entire time. And this new one will be where?
Key Road.
DeKalb County. I mean, DeKalb, city of DeKalb?
Right there, the city of the county, the city and county line, yes.
Three districts away from District 12 where my folks are. I just want to make sure that we say that it's currently in District 12, but it's denied a District 12. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes, just have a quick question. Don't know who on the team it'd be related to, but can this presentation and video be shared?
It absolutely can. We'll be posting it online. APD will be sharing that full video out. I would call your attention to APD's website and social media channels. There are already a number of videos that are posted there. Would ask your help to amplify those. We'll be posting this full presentation, including the video of the chief's remarks to council, and we'll be sharing that presentation digitally with council as well. So we'd encourage you to do so.
Second.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions? All right, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Godspeed to you and to all of your officers and personnel.